Jackie, who was asked that we amend the agenda. So we're going to go with citizens' comments first. At least a discussion on Assistant Superintendent, report from EEI, which is the bond vote. And fourth, executive session for legal and contract issues. So first item is citizens' comments. Any citizens have anything they want to say? Okay.
Ken.
Number two.
Dan.
Ken.
Oh, Dan, I'm sorry.
I'd just like to say, at a couple of board meetings ago, I requested that the board explain their reasons for their actions taken regarding the no confidence vote. I understand you're working on that. But I would like to say, based on recent disclosures of information, it does appear that the actions were highly inappropriate, if not unethical. And I would just ask the board to make things right with the superintendent so the community can move forward without this controversy. Thank you.
Are we open to discuss that right now? Or when do we discuss that?
Okay. Anybody else? Thank you. By the way, that was a completely, whoever did that release of information that you read online, I read it as well online, is that it seems to me that when a person is elected, you go to Tom Clark and get sworn in to enforce the laws of the state of Vermont. And one of them is about executive session and being quiet and everything and keeping wherever you learn an executive session there. And that means that one of the 11 individuals sitting in that meeting, or 12, it was 12. That meeting took something and not accidentally released something, but actually physically handed a piece of paper document to whoever. And I think that really, you know, it's illegal according to the law. And, you know, it would be nice if that person would be, have a backbone and enough to come up and not hide behind a pseudo name and stuff like that. But what it is, is what it is. Anybody? Okay, if you'd like to handle this.
I guess.
Okay.
Donna, the reason we had a vote of no confidence. We were told by the superintendent, Col King, that Donna, that you evaluated the principal at Molly Stark School. There was no formal discussion with that principal prior to her evaluation, and there was no input from anyone to where improvements needed to be made. The principal, to this day, has not seen a plan of correction. And I have her evaluation right here with no plan of correction. So that's a, in direct violation of her contract. Also, she was told at the meeting that you were at with Mr. Col King that he had brought to the board that we should not renew her contract, which we told him wasn't going to happen, I guess. Because I wasn't at that meeting, but everybody on the board had said that we didn't say that. Then, this said principal had piloted for staff development the Lexia program for reading. You then mandated for all K through three to use the Foundations for Reading, and it's a phonics-based program. The principal of that school presented a report showing how students' school, reading scores were improving using the Lexia program. We feel this is micromanagement. We believe that all students learn differently, and that multiple approaches should be used when able. If a program can be shown to work better for some students to further their understanding in reading and the curriculum is being followed when the teachers and their direct administrators should have, be able to make these decisions. And we've discussed this before at meetings. We believe some of the issues our principals and teachers are having is the varied approaches that change almost yearly. And this has happened since you started. We have had Green Mountain Star, SWIFT, there's a, I can't remember the number, the name of the new one. But almost every year, there's a different thing. This takes away from the teacher's time to teach. They have to learn a new system of teaching, collaborating, and this is detrimental to our students' outcomes.
That's what we have said.
Is that it?
Yep.
Okay. Well, I'd be happy to address those comments. And I'm glad that we're doing this in open session so that we can have an open discussion. I haven't had none of this information to date. So I also have my team of educational experts here that you may ask questions. And I think that's a good reason why we wanted to have this in open session, because we have been doing a considerable bond work with all of the schools in the district, many of which have shown great success and terrific improvement. I would just address, first of all, the Green Mountain Star and SWIFT and the different initiatives we've had. Those are driven by the Agency of Education, and they are not my ideas, and it's nothing that I have brought to the district. The schools in the BSD have been in corrective action for many years, and it is mandated that they provide an improvement plan, which is documented and approved by the superintendent as to how they will improve their practice to bring up the improvement level, the achievement levels of all students. So we have been working with all of the schools in your district and all of the SVSU to develop those plans. They are, that is the Green Mountain Star GMS Plan. SWIFT was aligned with that to some degree, and we kept trying to bring SWIFT in closer alignment so it was more meaningful for the staff. All of the schools have been working on school improvement plans and have made some significant progress, including Molly Stark, which has a leadership team that has developed goals and objectives for improvement. And we have seen some work toward that progress, but not really enough. The results of the students continue to decline. And one of the mandates of the state is when a school is in corrective action, there actually needs to be a restructuring plan. That means it needs to be significant enough to make change in the school, to make change and improve outcomes for students. And the outcomes, we have not seen. So what was shared with the principal was data on the students' results and talking about goals going forward for the leadership and for the school that will help bring about improvements for the school and for the community, because every student deserves a good education here. So I feel very strongly that I'm an advocate for every student here. And every day that goes by is a day that students lose in instruction if we are not making sure that every student has good first instruction. So yes, you know, we have had very, very good involvement with Molly Stark, as well as the other schools. You may ask any of our leaders here, what we have done here is a list of many of the supporting activities we have given Molly Stark on their request and supported them through their leadership process of developing change that will bring about a better education. And I think that, in some ways, we have seen some improvement. But change is hard, and that process is difficult. And frequently, the first reaction to that is anger or distress that they feel that that's not going to work for them. But we have gotten to the point where students, where teachers and administrators now can look at student data, make conclusions about what should the objectives be for growth and improvement, and they are making some improvements along those lines in whole-school discussions, as well as grade-level discussions in their collaboration time. We, I have had several meetings with the principal prior to the meeting that you're referring to. She did come up with some goals. She was not put on a corrective action plan. We do have a consistent plan for evaluating, supporting, and supervising leadership. It is well-aligned with the leadership standards in Vermont. It was addressed at the SVSU meeting and adopted as the SVSU policy for evaluation. As part of that plan, there is a goal-action plan. I will share this with you. This is currently the accepted model. This is the Vermont standard of what is supportive leadership. And we are developing those standards over the past two years. So there was knowledge of this plan. She did work towards some goals for improvement and was developing her goal-action plan. As well as, all the way up until September and maybe early October, she was inviting us to come to her leadership meetings to help the staff align their goals and objectives and to look closely at data so they could improve their instruction to meet every child's needs. So if you have further questions, I'm happy to answer them. Here is a self-assessment that she and all principals do provide during their evaluation plan. And here is a model of the goal-action plan that every principal is providing.
I was just going to add concerning the question about English Language Arts that since taking my position, which was vacant for a short period of time, that we convened the SV, reconvened the SVSU ELA committee. And Molly Stark is represented with three teachers on that committee. And that committee directly looks at, they have, I bring these teachers together to design the local curriculum, which is on our curriculum tab on the SVSU website. So there is a local ELA curriculum that Benell and Molly Stark and Monument all have teachers that were represented and had a voice in representing their staff in developing that resource. And then they also have a voice in looking at the resources that they think are going to help best meet the needs of their students based on the data that they're collecting. And they come together during the year to do that good work. So I am very proud to let you know that that is happening. And not only do we have that for ELA, there's an SVSU math committee, which Pat oversees, and there's representation from all the BSD schools, as well as a science committee that has representation from all the BSD schools. And the work that these teachers are doing is just phenomenal. And you'll notice that curriculum tab on the SVSU website is filling up quite nicely. And it is the teachers that are doing this work. They are coming together. And they are now looking at the resources they think are going to best meet the needs of the students that they're serving. And we're trying to just support and facilitate that process for them.
Thank you.
As well as coaching, and every school has had the opportunity to invite Pat Conway to come into their building to help them in the classroom with their students or to look at their data. We have Melissa Senical, who is our new data coach, and she is also available and will come to any building that, where she is invited, and help grade-level teams or school leadership teams look at their data and really focus their intent on what are their objectives for growth and improvement. And they have worked with many schools and seen significant progress. I do have some comparative data, if you would like to see that, for schools that have invited Pat Conway or Melissa into their building. And there has been significant growth in those schools where they have accessed that.
And Melissa and I are beginning to work together as a team, where Melissa's the expert, the go-to person in interpreting test results and scores. And then I come in and help with the action steps where, well, now that we know where the area of weakness is or where the struggles are, what do we do next instructionally? And that's where I come in with my map. And our teachers are really owning those scores that mean a lot to them, and they want to do well. They want to improve. Our teachers are lifelong learners, you can tell.
And it's not just the standardized test scores, the MAP and the S-PA, the state test. We're doing itemized analysis with chapter tests, with the end of the unit, a study of four, six-week unit. We look at those items and think, okay, we've got 13 children missed this particular question. Why? What is it about that question? Is it vocabulary? Is it concept? Or there'll be one standard that will have four questions that go with it. If the students had three questions, terrific. And one question bombed, we look at that and say, hmm, okay. Was it vocabulary? Was it a part of the standard that we missed the instruction for that concept? That's what we can offer.
Thank you.
I also have a rubric here that we are using with all the principals as a part of that supportive supervision plan that we have for the SVSU. And this rubric is a national leadership policy standard that actually shows what does each level of development look like for a school leader. And principals were encouraged to look through this and find what is their level of leadership so that they could create a goal that is at the next level of achievement. Drawing always forward to a more effective model of leadership, it's hard in schools, and it's lonely. And one of the things that we really have done is to try to develop a school process here that all principals have been part of, to have a supportive team where we discuss the movement toward what is good leadership. And we've had a great deal of professional development for all of the administrators. And whatever their intake on that information is up to them. But we have provided a principal's guide to how to improve reading achievement. We have had professional development, professional development on teacher evaluation and what are those rubrics, and how does good instruction look in the classroom so that they can better offer coaching to their teachers in their building. We have offered many opportunities for all of the administrators on what does, how do we help students of poverty to embrace different strategies within the buildings that are more effective? So we're always looking at the needs of our community, the needs of our school, and building a structure where strong leaders can access the help they need. And we have seen great evidence in the schools that it is working.
Think that addressed the question Jackie brought up about the process of that evaluation, if it was followed correctly?
Yes, yep. She did a self-assessment. We discussed the self-assessment, looked forward to goals, and then how to create an action plan. And she did develop goals along the lines of the different standards of leadership. And then she started to develop specifics of how she was going to accomplish that, and then let us know that she was retiring.
That's in direct contrast to what you told us last week, so just want you to know that, Mr. Col.
I would also address that the Lexia, she did decide to try a pilot program. That is Lexia, it's an online program that is meant for intervention only. It is not an instructional program. And she went online and did get that for her staff for a year to try as a pilot. It is not to replace our curriculum or our instructional programs. It is a program that can be used for intervention of students that need extra help. And that is the way it is designed by very good ELA leaders, but it is not an instructional program. We do have some instructional programs that are framework in our district. Early reading instruction is one of them, because we have many students who come to school with a low level of achievement, and they need direct instruction to bring them to a higher level of reading, which is very important for our students. And they can achieve at high levels if they're given good instruction once they get to school. That program is called Foundations. That is the foundation of all of our early reading instruction, although we have some that come even before that that are, that can be used with students who are more at even an earlier level of learning. But did you want to speak to that?
I was just going to say, and it's just one piece of the reading program. It's just one, one piece of a program that you have, that we use District Y.
And it's a balanced approach. That is a piece that would address the phonics, phonemic awareness, and fluency, many other components of.
You may have a guided reading piece. Kids have books in hand.
Comprehension and the vocabulary may come from other approaches that are, that teachers use in their classrooms. But the framework of teaching early reading skills that all children come to school saying they want to learn in kindergarten is Foundations. And students look forward to that and want to learn to read. And we feel responsible to teach them.
The other last piece I would add is that Foundations is just one piece of a, it's a Wilson program. And most of our interventionists that we have in our district are trained in Wilson. So when a child actually then needs an intervention, it all connects, all the pieces. So we have, we also have another program called Just Words, which is another Wilson-based intervention. And so they're all connected, and connections are good for kids. Kids are constantly looking for us to make connections for them. So it's just one little piece of the puzzle.
And the consistency of using the same program across all the schools in the SVSU is extremely important, because our students move from school to school. And even the consistency from class to class is very important so that everyone understands and can reinforce the similar learning that students are having in each grade level to reach expectations for accomplishment at each grade level.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions or comments?
Are we, are we going to discuss our vote of no confidence?
If you want.
What would you like to say? Would you like to see us reconsider that?
Yes, I would. I do feel that I was not involved with the discussion, and I certainly could have shared this information with you at any time if I could have had that opportunity to have the discussion.
We have asked that you be brought to the board on a couple of occasions and explain all this to us.
Did you ask me personally, or have you made that request?
No, we go through the superintendent.
Oh. Well, I've been to your board a few times. If there were specifics you wanted me to address, I certainly would have come to your board. I mean, on your specific questions that you had, I would have been happy to discuss those with you. But I have not had that information.
You were there on March 2nd, weren't you?
When you took, when you took that vote? Yes.
I didn't hear what your comment was.
I asked her if she was present the night of March 2nd, when we took the vote.
Yes, she was. Any more discussion on this?
Well, it just seems strange to not resolve anything.
We'll take it under advisement.
What's that?
Take it under advisement and discuss it after.
Okay.
See if there's any more discussion. Okay, next item. By the way, thank you very much for your interview.
Thank you.
Next is the EEI report. Again, we're sort of in limbo with this EEI. We'd like, I think, is an update and a timeline of what has to be done and when you expect to get it done and so forth, because everybody's telling us that, you know, the 10 weeks or eight weeks you have in the summer is going to be tight and what you're looking for.
Sure. So again, I'm Mike Davey with Energy Efficient Investments. And we are coming up on a couple of key milestones which require board action. And one of the reasons we would request you to be here today is just to discuss those. The first, the first of which, there's a 30-day waiting period, I believe, after a bond vote is passed before the contract can be signed and the funds expended for the performance contract. And that expires, I believe, on Thursday, at the end of day Thursday, which means on Monday, we could, we could, we could go ahead with finalizing design and having the contract executed. There are some other issues that we can talk about related to that. The other thing that also is ongoing, and I asked the treasurer, if she could come as well and help go sort through this issue, is that the warrant article specifically said that this would be financed through a 15-year agreement, which could be a bond or lease. So EEI solicited a proposal from a Vermont-based financing company called Municipal Leasing Consultants. And they've put together a proposal for a 15-year lease, which I believe the treasurer has a copy of. And then for, just so that everyone's up to speed, I'll give you my understanding about the way the bond process works, and then the treasurer can certainly give an update. If, so if you decide to go with a lease, you have the proposal for that in front of you. For the bond, the way that that works is.
No, we don't.
No, we don't.
Oh, sorry. The lease, do you have a copy of that lease?
I do.
Okay. But not for distribution.
I didn't obtain it. It was a copy that was given to yourself.
Sorry.
It was a document that you provided.
The generic view was to the SVSU, not to the board specifically. I apologize. So that proposal was for a 15-year term at, is it two and three-quarter percent, I believe? So it's a 15-year term at two and three-quarters percent. We sent that into Amanda, and I thought that was distributed, but my mistake that that wasn't.
Just say, why did it go to the SU? It's not an SU project.
I don't believe it did go to the SU.
It just went to Amanda. Isn't Amanda an SU employee?
Yeah, but we don't have a Bennington employee out here. It would have to come here.
I mean, yeah. So we had, we had been dealing with Amanda after the award of this project. So I'd say that was.
So anyways, she got it.
So right, so there's a proposal for a 15-year lease agreement for two and, two and three-quarter percent. The other option, if the board does not decide to go with the lease, is a bond. And the way that a bond would work is the Vermont Bond Bank can only go out, they only go out to issue a bond once a year, in August. So you wouldn't know what your rate would be if you go with a bond. And because they go out for bond funding in August, and the project starts expending funds in May, what typically happens is that there is an interim financing arrangement between now and the bond fund. So, and I believe there's an RFPL from the treasurer's office that will have that rate, that for that interim financing piece. And then you would get that rate, and then in August, you'd find out what the bond rate is. If you were to do the bond as of last week, the rate was about two and a half percent. So if you lock in with the lease right now, you're at, you're at, you're a quarter point higher than where the bonds are. But there's not, there's nothing to tell us that the bonds may be higher and may be lower in August. We just, we just don't know. So you can kind of lock in and at that two and a quarter, or if you want to go with the bond vote, or if you want to go with the bond, then you could get lower, it could be higher. The, you know, your attorney is here, so if he wants to advise you on lease versus bond. My understanding of the main difference is that a lease will have an opt-out clause, so it's considered an operational expense, whereas a bond is considered debt for the school district because it's an issued bond, so. So that's one issue. Anything that I missed in explaining that?
Can you explain, you get the bond, you own it, you should be equipped with stuff. What happens at the end of the lease?
You own it at the end of the lease.
So it's basically like a bond, then? It's not like leasing a car, you got to turn it back in.
No, no.
Or there's a big pigment at the end.
They come and take everything over.
Normally, they're not thinking of, at the end, you pay a big long sum.
Fifty gas balloons.
Right. You know, I do a lot of these projects, and it's about, it's about 50/50 whether some municipalities lease or bond. A lot of these projects are done with lease. A lot of them are done with bond. Because lease is typically considered an operational expense, some boards feel that because there's energy savings coming out of the operational savings that pay most of the lease payments, that it's more appropriate to do it as a lease. Others feel more comfortable with a bond. We don't, we don't take a position on it one way or the other. What we, what is critical to us is that on Friday, when this period expires, that there's a plan of action of how to. when this period, period expires, that there's a plan of action of how, how to get this approved as quickly as possible. Because we need a, we need, we don't care as much what the funding vehicle is. Because I think you have, you're gonna have two very good options. Vermont Bond Bank will have a good, a good proposal. And then Municipal Leasing, they do these projects up and down the state all, all the time, so.
Is one easier than the other?
Do you want to take any part in that?
Well, you would have more experience, I think, with on the leasing end of things than I do. As you know, I do my typical annual anticipation notes.
Wait a minute.
There, there is a process that we would have to go through.
Because you have to get the interim financing also.
Right.
And I do currently have a request for proposals out. Those figures should be coming on Thursday afternoon by 3 o'clock for a bond anticipation note. That bond counsel actually prepared and I distributed to the banks in the area here. It did prepare it for a one-year bond anticipation note. And I have had a couple of the bankers ask me if it's necessary for it to be a year. Clearly, it's not because of the length of...
Because it's only till August.
Right. Um, well, actually, Bob, Bob Giraud is planning to go out to, um, to sale on the bonds. I think he said late June, actually, so it could be even a shorter period of time. But they did say that it's possible. They didn't make any promises. But if we were looking at a shorter length of time of having that bond anticipation note, the interest rates might be even lower.
They give you any idea what they are right now?
No.
It just, just seems to me that taxpayers of Bennington vote approved a four-plus, a four-million-plus project. And I'm, I'm uncomfortable until I see a legal opinion that's going to tell us and give us direction as to where to go. It may be a lease, it may be through the bond bank. But I'm uncomfortable until I have our own legal counsel give us some advice on what to do. It's just too big a project as far as I'm personally concerned on the, on the direction to go. And I feel that we owe that to the people that approved this project for the Bennington School District. So that's where I'm coming from.
I second too.
Ken?
Oh, we'll have that. Ken? Just from my own experience in working both with bonds and with, with borrowing other than the bond bank, the documents and the necessary transactions are pretty much similar. You will need bond counsel. Normally municipalities use Paul Giuliani. I don't know whether school districts do the same. So you're gonna find that the documents that you need and the, and the copies of things that document your actions up until the bond vote are gonna be pretty much the same, pretty similar. And I, I wouldn't say one's gonna be any easier than the other.
Yeah, the only, the only complexity of the bond is that there's two, there's two parties involved. And the lease is, is one party, so. But I think either a good way to go. What's most important for us is that we know, we know as soon as possible which, which route we want to go so we can get that process started. And, you know, what I would hope is that the first week in April, you could have a decision on that, of which way you want to go.
So their next scheduled meeting is Wednesday, the 6th. Is that too late for you?
We'll work with the time tables that were, were, were needed, but the sooner the better. The, there's sort of a race to order the equipment, so the sooner we could, you know. What, what I had originally hoped when we met with, with the staff was maybe that Friday to...
That was one of the reasons why we asked Mr. Lynn to come tonight. Because we've hired him to look over all the documents and to make sure everything is up to speed. And we're supposed to talk with him in executive session after, so.
Okay. We'll let you know.
Okay. And you're gonna be getting the bids from the bank on Thursday at 3:00. So, so we'll know what that bridge loan is.
Just a question. I'm assuming this is considered a construction project?
Yes.
In excess of $500,000?
Yes.
Did we pre-qualify 60 days prior to the bid?
We wouldn't know. That would be up to Rick Pembroke who's not here with us.
Okay. Because there are certain, there are certain statutory requirements under the, under the law that require pre-qualification at 60 days and then a notice to the contractors of, that you feel that are not qualified within 30 days of the bid. And I, I was not aware that those things took place, but I, I have, I have to tell you, I wasn't really paying that much attention.
Well, that's exactly why I brought the comment up that I was uncomfortable until we, till I, till we get legal counsel to tell us that we've touched all the bases and crossed all the Ts and dotted all the Is before we go.
Yeah, I just, I, I hadn't followed it that closely, so I don't know.
The other, the other item that is up for consideration is our contract is currently being reviewed, I think internally here in your house with your attorney. That con, right now, just to, just to back up, when we were awarded the proposal, EEI's auditing is operating under what's currently a, a contract for the investment-grade energy audit. So we, there is a contract between our parties right now. But that doesn't cover anywhere near close to the amount of funds that was approved in for the construction phase. So in addition to on Friday, assuming that, you know, your attorney blesses the lease or the bond and, and you're headed in a direction, we were also looking for an executed copy of our contract. And if that process is gonna take a couple more weeks to get through, what is typical is the board authorizing a letter of intent. And what that letter of intent would do is, it's a commitment from, from the, from the Bennington School District that the contract is under review, the voters have approved the project, the leasing is being secured. And it allows us to complete the engineering, to order long-lead items, and to secure commitments from subcontractors. So I brought, I brought a copy of that, which I can distribute. We can certainly, um, we can certainly discuss the appropriate amount. Typically, typically, they're between 100,000 and 200,000. And so that, we can discuss what's appropriate. I'd say in good faith, after the vote was approved and, um, and during this waiting period, there's a lot of work that has to happen this summer. And, you know, it, it would be, it would be almost impossible if we just sat on our hands and waited for every I to be dotted and T to be crossed. So in the meantime, we've already completed a structural analysis of the building. So we're putting new rooftop units on, with energy recovery ventilation on two of the school's roofs. So we brought our structural engineer to review that. And we've also in the middle of doing the mechanical engineering so that when we actually go to do the, the order of the material the first week of April, we'll have design documents that, um, that will be stamped by an engineer so that we can all feel comfortable we're gonna order material that's, um, that's approved. And, and, you know, ordering a rooftop unit, we're, we're looking at the gym roof to make sure it's structurally sound. So we're, we're taking steps so that as soon as, um, as soon as that letter of intent is signed, we can, uh, we can move, move forward with actually procuring the material. I'd say there was a concern brought up about the, the tightness of the schedule. And as long as the first week in April, we, we, we have authority to, to order material and the contracts are approved, I feel that, that getting the material in time for successful completion is not a concern. If, if the process did drag on for several weeks and we haven't ordered material by, you know, mid to end of April, then it, then it'll become a very big challenge. And we'll have to, we'll have to, um, come up with Plan Bs and Cs of how to do it. I would say, um, right now, you know, and we, and we can certainly meet with the town code officials once we have all the approval. But this project is, is, is two components as the primary drivers. One, one is the ventilation, so it's bringing all the ventilation up to code in all the classrooms. And the, the other phase is the heating plants. So when, when school starts at the end of August, we do need ventilation for the students. We do need, um, that section. We do need all the classroom work to be done. What we may not need is the boiler plants until, until middle of September. So the game plan for construction, broadly speaking, we, we meet with Jerry on a, on a weekly basis almost to talk about the schedule, is to, to get all the classroom work done during the, the summer recess time to get the ventilation systems up and running. And then leave the boiler room work until end of August, September, because you really don't need the boilers, hopefully, until, um, until middle to end of September. So that's broadly speaking, um, the schedule, the scheduled intent. I think there's some discussions and whether or not this is the best venue for that, I'm not sure. But there's, there's some discussions about what level of activities will still need to be maintained during the summer breaks. And we, we did meet with the superintendent and there's everything from summer lunch programs to, to, to summer schools, to disability programs. And so we just need to, one thing that we don't have 100% clear direction on is how many, what, what areas do we need to leave accessible? What areas do we not? You know, anything can be done with the right amount of planning. And if that's a separate meeting with the principals, that's fine. But that's one of the other issues that we've been, we've been talking about.
So the permits aren't in place yet?
No, it's one of those...
And nobody's approached the town about it?
The permits are not in place because it's one of those things that we're doing the design right now. So typically, the mechanicals and building inspectors won't approve something without prints. So we're, we're in the process of doing those prints. I actually have the structural review was completed on Saturday. So that's the first document that I have. I'm expecting stamped. The, the biggest mechanical project is Bennington Elementary. And that project, that, those prints are due to me on Friday of this week. So as soon as I have those prints in hand, we'll bring them to the, to the authorities of the jurisdiction. I will say we, we, our, our engineer, we also, the other part, the, one other part is the propane tanks. And we have contacted the local fire department, at least our engineer did, to discuss placement of the, of the fire, of the propane tanks.
Does anybody have any questions to Mike?
I have one question. What, what's the schedule for paying for the project? I mean, we've talked a lot about bonds and we've talked about leasing. And, and so far, we don't have either. So what's the schedule for payments?
So, so in our, in our contract, I, I believe it says that the payment, we, we're, we're paid either directly or indirectly by the leasing company. So we really can't be paid anything until that lease is in place. And we sent Amanda a copy of, of a sample cash flow that I believe was sent to the, to the bidders on the, on the, um, on the bond interim financing. But, you know, broadly speaking, our first invoice is, would typically be done, would typically be sent in at the end of April. And then it would be due 30 days from there, plus or minus. And, which means our first payment would actually be due in, in the end of May.
So we still, we still have, we still have 60 days?
No, we don't.
No, we don't.
He just told you he can't order.
Friday.
There's certain items that are...
When do we have to sign this?
By Friday.
The latest probably would be next meeting on the 6th of April. He would like it earlier, but the 6th would probably be our deadline. Where we could get the quotes, information from our lawyers, get any up-to-date information and make an intelligent decision on Wednesday.
And who is, sorry. Who's meeting to decide what's happening with the summer activities? Is that...
We're meeting with the principals and there's a, summer coordinator for all programs in each building. Met with them. What we said is we would have recommendations at the April 6th board meeting on where those programs will be housed and what we'll be able to know.
Okay. Yeah, thank you.
Seems to be working with the administration, you know.
Workable, Jim.
Yeah, I, I think after our meetings with Mike, that we're reluctant to put any students in the buildings or any part of the building. Because there, it is gonna be an active construction zone inside as well as outside. We have oil tanks, propane tanks. So we're looking at alternative sites for everything as much as possible.
How about panel school? Because they're on board.
Transportation becomes an issue.
We're on board with them now, as of June, right? Aren't we on board with them as of June?
Well, we're gonna bus for them.
Yeah.
But we'd have to make an agreement.
What the principals are telling us in the summer school coordinator is if we, we venture too far from where the programs are, there's significant fall off in attendance and, um, and in participation for lunch. So we're trying to look for alternative sites as close to those buildings as possible for the summer school. The, the extended year for special ed, we think we have that taken care of. And how we're gonna do kinder camp, we've planned to for the last meeting. End school a few days early for kindergarten.
One other thing that we had requested, and we request this from every school district with this major summer project, is just a, a, a consideration of expanding the summer recess anywhere possible. And that's anything from, sometimes there's faculty-staff days where they come back to the school, you know, four or five days early. We ask, you know, to consolidate that, maybe at, at another location if there's training meetings. And then I know one thing that we had talked to Rick about during this process was a consideration of, of expanding the vacation period for the Bennington Elementary schools. Just because of the, the, we're working in every single classroom and every extra day that we can get makes it, makes it easier and...
That possible?
Right. And, and also what we discussed is we can certainly do the summer professional development
of our staff, staff somewhere else. And we do have the option, because our students are scheduled for 180 days, that we could schedule them for 175 days and start school for BSD five days later than everyone else. What we're considering is holding off until August 1st and seeing where we are in the construction so that we're fully notified, parents, because we don't want to cancel school unless we absolutely have to. And it would be a shorter year for impact, how kindergarten starts and all of that. So, but we're aware that that may be a possibility.
Oh, we also got five days earlier this year to get out.
Yep.
And it's a one-time thing. I mean, that's going to serve the children and teachers and the people that gotta work in those buildings for a long, long time.
Will it help the environment?
I mean, it's one year.
I think that's where everybody has to understand that it is gonna be exceptional. Summer school is not gonna be like what summer school has been like in the previous summers. And it's, and it's one summer.
Really? Don't they want a healthier environment?
No, I don't think there's gonna be that much bad class.
Any other questions or comments from Mike?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Public, anybody have any comments?
A motion to go into executive session for legal and contract issues.
Second.
Okay, we're back into open session. Jackie?
I'd like to, Jackie Kelly, I'd like to make a motion. If the Agency of Education approves the project for the energy efficiency of our schools, then we authorize Ken to approve and sign the letter of intent so that we don't waste any more time. A second to motion, discussion. We're supposed to know tomorrow.
Okay.
We will know by tomorrow.
One way or the other.
Okay, great.
All in favor? Unanimous. Okay. So we'll let you know one way or the other. Okay, now I got a statement I've been asked to read here. Okay, the Bennington School District Board of Directors took a vote of no confidence in the superintendent, James Ko King, during a meeting held on March 2, 2016. In the interest of the public's right to know, the board would like to provide the following reason for the vote. The superintendent stated at a meeting with the selectmen on January 13th, 2016, that he did not support the BSD board endeavor to go forward with our building's energy upgrades. The superintendent put the SVSU CFO, Rick Pembroke, on administrative leave prior to a town meeting day. With the CFO on leave, it was unclear who would handle the bond for the energy upgrades. This is a time-sensitive project that needs to be completed with efficiency. The BSD board believes that by putting... The BSD board believes that by putting the project at risk, there has been considerable strain placed on the BSD as well as the taxpayers. This does not include the approximately $74,000 that the former CFO, Bia, will cost the Bennington School Board, District. The BSD board is frustrated by what we believe to be poor communication between the board and the superintendent, as well as a discord vision regarding the future of our schools. We hope that the community will support us as we aim to regain confidence in the superintendent, mend relationships, and reexamine our goals and priorities. We move forward with the well-being of our students, teachers, and all the stakeholders in mind. Bennington School Board." Thank you. March 14, adjourned?
So moved.
So, all in favor? Unanimous.